Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting this evening. Sorry for the delay in getting started. It's hard to get here with the traffic and everything. So, in order to get the meeting started, if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which is changed, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in itsness.
Great, thank you. I'll do the roll call. Thomas?
Here.
Otto?
Here.
Westover?
Here.
Instrom? Here. Daca absent with no notice? And then check his absent with notice. I'm to adopt the balance of the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda.
Support.
Thank you. Instrom motioned, and Thomas supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Under the call to the public. This is an opportunity to stand up and share your thoughts. We do limit you to three minutes. And keep in mind, it's not a question and answer session at this time. It's just a chance to share your thoughts. Do we have anyone that would like to speak right now? Come on up.
Chuck Steyer, Six Mile Road. A couple of things to consider in your deliberation on the acquisition of real estate. As I had pointed out in previous comments, number one, the real cost of this property is going to be far in excess of the $300,000 and some thousand dollars that you're considering. In addition, what I did not catch last time is this is going to take this property off of the tax rolls. So, the cost to those of us that are paying the bills around here is going to be the loss of the tax revenue on this property in addition to what you're going to finance or take out of the general fund or whatever to buy the property and take on the additional costs that will be spent sunk into this property. Also, if you go back to the archives on previous Board of Trustees meetings, to November 10th of 2015, and this, all of the meetings are available online. You can watch this for yourself. At one hour and 25 minutes into that meeting, there are comments by Mr. Fink saying that the reality is, we are not in the real, we are not real estate people. We are not in the real estate brokers. We are not in the business of giving incentives to build out. I would suggest that each of you watch that segment. And I think it explains very well why you should be voting no on the acquisition of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Come on up.
David Gordon, 5558 Helena Road. Good evening. This is the third special meeting regarding this property that you're considering purchasing in downtown Whitmore Lake. First of all, let me say, I think it's a great idea to have a public park downtown. I think it'll help the community a lot, bring people into the downtown area. I've thought it was a good idea for a very long time. I do have some things that are concerning to me. Number one is, I just talked with Howard before I had the meeting, and when I looked at the packet, I didn't see any notes from a Realtor. And Howard informed me that you actually don't have a Realtor handling this purchase for you. I think it's, it would be prudent to have a professional Realtor on your, in your corner regarding this negotiation for the simple reason that I think everybody's kind of agreed that this property has never been worth the $2 million that was the asking price. So, what is it really worth? And how do you know if you don't have a Realtor? Simply looking at the assessing rolls will only tell you what it's assessed for, and we all know that those are not necessarily what the property's worth. So, as a former trustee, I would recommend that you seek professional guidance before spending $320,000 of taxpayer dollars. I've heard no discussion whatsoever in terms of how you intend to pay for this. I hope that you do send out a postcard to the residents and let them know what you're planning on doing, whether you borrow all this money or whether you spend it. I think it's the kind of thing that you should inform the public about. I see nothing under the news items on the website that mention this potential, which is a very exciting potential for the community. And I believe that in the past, this board has made some huge financial mistakes, and I certainly hope we don't enter into another one at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside. I understand this is not a question session for the board, but is it correct that my understanding is that you're only talking at this point about $229,000 for the 15.3 acres? Is that correct or no? It's the whole, the whole thing. Okay. And I also think that it would be very helpful for downtown, for drawing people here, which we need. And I think that it's time that the people in this community start coming together instead of polarizing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Takes us on to any board member comments at this time? Anyone? All right, thank you. Correspondence announcements?
Nothing.
Great, thank you. I'll make a motion, or it takes us on to our agenda item of tonight's special meeting, which is the Van Curler property purchase agreement.
Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mainz. He's here to discuss the issues of the purchase agreement that you have in front of you. And I feel most comfortable with him going through the details. If you can indulge us, I think we would like to go through the full purchase agreement, not in, obviously, line-by-line detail, but to make sure everyone is in agreement with the document that is in front of you. Obviously, we haven't had a huge amount of time to review it, so that's why I'm asking Mr. Mainz to go through the full document.
Thank you, Brad. The floor is all yours.
Thank you very much. As a general matter, there are really about three classes of revisions that got made by sellers, seller and seller's attorney that I want to make sure that you're aware of. The first is on the first page, paragraph 1A. Mr. Fink and I had proposed a deposit of $2,000. They've asked for $20,000.
$500 is what we proposed. Sorry.
In any event.
In any event.
I talked to counsel for the Van Curlers. It's my understanding that because the limitation as far as remedies, in the event that we default on the purchase agreement, is limited to solely the earnest money deposit, they wanted a little bit more, just to have some added security that we're not going to kick the tires for 90 days and then back out, leaving them with nothing. It is, so that's the first one. The second one is this US-23 right-of-way, which may be quite a surprise. It was certainly quite a surprise to Howard and I when it came up. Apparently, the MDOT is looking to expand US-23 in this area, or at least looking to have the ability to do so in the future. So, they're seeking the acquisition of additional land to do so. What this paragraph is intended to do is to make sure that, that we're going to be able to be involved in the discussions for that regardless of when that actual process takes So, the sales, our sales price isn't going to be impacted, but it specifically provides that seller won't sign any agreements concerning the right-of-way without first contacting us and giving us an opportunity to object.
So, my question is, the seller putting this in, number one, will they get any money or any monies from selling of the right-of-way, or will that go directly to us?
So, basically, the way that this is constructed is to give us a seat at the table in the discussions of how all that's going to work out in terms of where the money's going to go. My understanding from talking with the attorney for seller, which obviously, none of this is binding, but the intention would be for the money to end up going to us because the sales price isn't going to be impacted. Normally, if they were going to get money for the right-of-way, it would decrease the amount of property, and our sales price would go down. But because it's not, the intention would be for it to go to us. But that deal is not even close to being negotiated at this point, so there's nothing really to put in here apart from, we're going to have the ability to object if that deal gets negotiated.
So, my question is, why is a seller negotiating something that by the time we would normally purchase this, they would have no rights to it?
They're the owner in place now.
Yeah, but I'm saying by the time this actually happens, they probably won't be the owners in place, so why have this in there?
The reason why is, MDOT can't negotiate with us. We don't own the property. They have to negotiate with someone. The point of this is to make sure that if they do negotiate with the current seller, that we have a right to object.
Okay, but could we put a contingency in here that states that if this happens, if the close of the purchase of the easement happens after the close of our, that we are the owners of it? I mean, that we get, I mean, it should say something that we're getting that money if it happens after that point.
So, if they close, the only way that they can get the easement after we close on the property is if they get it from us.
It's a practical matter.
I understand, but I'm just, it doesn't seem like it's clear to me.
Sure.
It's not clean. That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
It's not clean to me. If it happens before this, then the price should go down because we're getting less property. It should spell all that out.
Right, so.
I mean, they're the ones that stick it, stuck it in there.
Right, so what it says here is, purchasers shall buy the property subject to such taking or conveyance and receive all proceeds or consideration from such transactions. In other words, we get the money from, if MDOT buys the property, we get the money for the purchase. We can, we can clean it up, but it.
I would like to clean that up.
In essence, it says what you're looking for it to say.
Yeah, because it says purchaser shall buy, but it doesn't say who's, who's the money going to. That's what I'm saying.
Right, so purchaser, that's us.
Well, we're the buyer, not the purchaser. So, I mean, this contract says buyer.
Yeah, it should say buyer. You're right.
That's why it's kind of confusing me because I'm thinking, okay, is Michigan Department of Transportation the purchaser?
No, that, that should be buyer.
Okay.
That should be us. I understand, I understand why you're confused. That makes sense. Then, this is, this is more what I, what I would characterize as being sort of a thumb printing type of issue, but under title, the contingencies for title, survey, and environmental conditions, each one of them has a section that says essentially, as long as we don't object during the objection period, our objection is deemed to be waived, which is standard. So, the last substantial change is, if you look on page three, they have deleted three different contingencies from the purchase agreement. The first is easements and access rights. That's really something that we normally keep in just to be on the safe side, but since we're bordering a public road here, it's probably not necessary. Zoning approvals, we put this in most purchase agreements. Obviously, we're the municipality, so to some extent, we have control over the zoning. We left it in this one just because we weren't totally sure what exactly the plan was going to be, so we wanted to make sure that we had the flexibility that if we weren't able to get an appropriate zone for it, we would have time to be able to do that. I'll let Mr. Fink address the appropriateness of the current zone for the proposed use. The final one, which I do think is potentially a concern, and I'll let Howard speak to this as well, is they did delete the financing contingency. I assume that this was done because you're a municipality, you have lots of money. What do you need a financing contingency for? But as a practical matter, municipalities do finance purchases of this size. It's not uncommon. I don't think that the financing contingency should go. I think that we should retain the flexibility to at least evaluate that as to whether that's something that the municipality wants to do or not.
My, just so everyone knows, my general recommendation for the board is to finance the property.
Do you want to talk about zoning, Howard? That's, that's all I've got.
So, so, I mean, the, I don't have the full zoning map in front of me. It's actually right behind the Maryland there, if we want to take a look at it. But a good portion of this property is zoned in the Whitmore Lake Downtown District, and that district does allow recreation. So, under the zoning of our field township, one of the conditional uses for this area is outdoor, commercial, recreation, public, or private. So, under a conditional use, we would have to go through the Planning Commission and receive conditional use approval for a, a park and recreation asset. But there's a path to do that. And so, it's your call is to whether or not you think zoning should stay in there. I don't believe that we would necessarily have every duck in a row for zoning within the contingency period. I think that based on the fact that the code allows it as a conditional use, there's a path. I don't see any objection per se to recreation in that area, but, you know, I do want to point it out. So, it's really a business decision on the board's part.
The board ultimately approves conditional uses.
Correct.
So, the contingency is completely in our own hands, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, to, to an extent, because the Planning Commission will weigh in on it.
They'll make a recommendation.
Right.
They make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees ultimately approves the conditional use.
But the Planning Commission's not a gatekeeper. They can't prevent the board from reaching down and deciding the conditional use issue if it chooses to.
That is correct. They can make a recommendation one way or another, but that's all they can do. If you recall, there was a pretty significant debate a number of years ago as to whether or not. So, I mean, it's, it's you guys' call. I, as a practical matter, you know, if you all want a park to be there, then you're going to be able to have a park being there. But at the end of the day, as, as we've indicated to the board on a number of occasions, you know, some of this is a business decision, so that's your call.
So, any part of this, we could say if we wanted to only take portion of the property, after we purchased the property, we would only want to take portion of the property as a park. We could go ahead and sell the rest of it without an issue.
Yes.
To break up the property.
We, we obtained as part of the preliminary paragraph there, the ability to do any and all land splits permitted by law, so.
Okay.
As, as long as the splits are permitted under the Land Division Act, then absolutely.
So, as a practical matter, again, according to, and this isn't the most up-recent map, but it's recent enough, this is zoned Whitmore Lake Downtown North Village. The entire property, for the most part, is zoned Whitmore Lake Downtown North Village. And in the Whitmore Lake Downtown North Village, commercial, outdoor, commercial, recreation, public, or private is considered a conditional use in the Whitmore Lake Downtown North Village, and it's also considered a conditional use in all of the other form-based Whitmore Lake Downtown districts that we have. And for those of you who would like to see, show you here, this is the property in question, obviously, in the blue or in this light teal, and as you can see, sorry.
That's right.
It's Whitmore Lake North Village. Now, there is a little sliver of property that comes out the Barker Road that is not Whitmore Lake North Village, that is considered more of a commercial. And that is in the.
Pink.
In the pink.
Or red.
Whitmore Lake Downtown. It's in the WLDD.
Okay.
Which, again, would allow the same kind of recreation as a conditional use. I don't personally see a zoning issue.
Well, we're, we're looking at that. I just had one question for Brad. The paragraph for the survey, and you're happy with the language in there to, that if we're not happy with where we believe those boundary lines are, especially for the lakefront, as Wayne had talked about at our last meeting, that we can get out of the contract and get the deposit back?
Yes. The, the language that's relevant here is, if the survey reveals any exceptions to title or any matters affecting the property, buyer may notify seller of such survey exceptions prior to the expiration of the contingency period, whereupon seller may cure any disapproved survey exceptions within 15 days of receiving said survey notice. If seller fails to cure any survey exceptions referenced in the survey notice within said 15 days, buyer shall have the option to terminate this contract by delivering written notice thereof to seller.
Should we put, do we need to put in deposit returned or anything like that?
We can add that to both of the sections that they add. As a practical matter, the only time that the deposit does not get returned is if there's an actual default, which is governed by paragraph nine of the agreement. And since this wouldn't be a default, it'd be a termination of the agreement. But I don't have any problem with adding in a sentence to make that clear, and we would do that in paragraph A, B, and C.
Yeah, because we don't have that many contingencies, and I know, I agree with Wayne on his, you know, worrisome of, you know, we all assume what the lakefront is there, but, you know, it's not well-defined, and now that they've split those other pieces off, just to make sure that what we think we're getting is what we're getting.
Sure.
Brad, are you, are you comfortable that that language is not an objective standard, but is a subjective standard? You know what I'm saying? In, in other words, the contingencies, we've got to be happy.
Right.
Subjectively, not would a reasonable buyer be happy with them?
Yes, I, I am.
And just going back to the zoning question, Brad, as, again, as a practical matter, is conditional use subject to referendum?
I do not know the answer to that off the top of my head.
So, that would be?
I think the answer to that's no, but I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
And I don't either. So, I mean, the, let me just explain what the, what my concern is in the question. If the conditional use is subject to referendum, then, and the board essentially approves a conditional use, and then it goes to referendum and it gets denied, you, you could theoretically have a situation in which the township was not able to use the property in its form that they wished. I don't know if conditional use is subject to referendum or not. I know that rezonings.
Right, rezonings.
Are subject to referendum.
Anyone have any more questions for Brad?
I have one more. Under the environmental conditions, it says that we could request to have the soils, groundwater, et cetera, be tested, and it would have to be at our expense, right?
Yes.
Okay. But then over on number eight, it says as-is purchase.
Correct.
So, I'm looking at that as saying if there was any dumping, any issues with the groundwater, with any of the land, that type of thing, because that property's been there for a long time and sitting.
Right. So, generally speaking, the two alternate ways to do this are, you either get a warranted purchase, in which case there's no need to do due diligence, so you don't do environmental investigation, et cetera, because you have a warranty of environmental conditions.
Okay.
Or if you're going to do an as-is purchase, which is what they've requested, then you get a full opportunity to do an environmental investigation so that though you're purchasing as-is, you're taking essentially with your eyes wide open because you've had the full opportunity to find out what's there. So, the, the two clauses that you referenced.
Go together.
Go together. Yeah, you, you would see those in a purchase agreement together.
Okay.
Okay, so, the US-23 thing is interesting. Basically, the utility companies and MDOT could expand the US-23 footprint, for lack of a better word.
Right.
And that could impact the amount of land that we would own.
Correct.
The way that I read this, in effect, we're stepping into their shoes as the owner for condemnation purposes.
Correct. We, we would get essentially the fair market value price paid under the condemnation.
Even if they seek, and condemnation doesn't happen fast.
No, it does not.
So, and, and there's no indication that this is going to result in a contentious condemnation valuation proceeding. You're not getting that, that vibe at all.
I've had conversations with MDOT. I am not getting that vibe.
Okay.
And I'm getting the vibe that, the vibe that I've received is that they will be making an offer.
Right.
Based on valuation, and we will have a chance to review the valuation. They will go through an appraisal process. My initial conversation with MDOT is that they're looking for an additional 25 feet off of the curvature of US-23, which as a practical matter, wouldn't affect.
Right.
Our ability to use this property in the way that we've thought about. But, again, it's, it's an issue when it's in there.
For what it's worth, I, I do agree with trustee Otto that I think that that language could be shored up and could be clearer. I don't like it as a, an opportunity to object. We should have the ability to essentially approve or disapprove.
Right.
I, to me.
That's why I said stepping into the shoes.
To me, object is, I stand up in court and say, I object, and the court says, okay, too bad.
Right.
Denied.
Right.
So, I, I agree. I think that that should be clear, and it should give us the, essentially, an approval over it.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? So, I'm assuming you're looking for a motion to approve the contract as presented tonight with the changes? Do you need, what do you need from us?
I would say, motion to approve the real estate purchase contract as revised by seller, subject to a revision of paragraphs 1B, 2A, B, and C to reflect the discussions tonight.
What about the issue of conditional use on the zoning side?
And I suppose you could do it subject to satisfaction of the, of the issue regarding conditional use.
And satisf, satisfaction would be a determination that conditional use is not bound, is not over, is not able to be overturned via referendum.
Correct.
If it is able to be overturned via referendum.
Come back.
Then we would have to come back.
Right.
Okay. And does that, does that make sense? And does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, because otherwise, the zoning...
Sorry. Otherwise, the zoning contingency is pretty meaningless. I mean, if it's subject to a referendum, then it's not meaningless.
Correct.
But if it's not subject to a referendum, then the zoning contingency is not a contingency at all because we're the operative body that can approve or disapprove the zoning contingency.
Right.
And I apologize for not thinking of the conditional use referendum. That literally popped into my head tonight as we were sitting here.
And just for everybody else's kind of edification, the zoning in that area, in those areas, actually, by happenstance, David was part of it too, we redid that zoning on the Planning Commission years ago, and it's flexible. It's really, really flexible, and it's flexible on purpose. So, other than this, the idea that recreation is a conditional use, lots of other uses are totally permitted uses and uses by right, so...
They are, and I would agree with that, but I actually would make a caveat to that. And my caveat would be that while they are flexible, they do require, and not only encourage, but in some cases, require a sort of urban-built environment. And in requiring an urban-built environment, often that can be seen. I'm not making a judgment call on it because I actually think that it's a good style to describe to and to obtain, but as a practical matter, developers often see that type of built environment as a costly and risky development proposition. So, from that perspective, it could be somewhat, it could be somewhat restrictive.
He's talking about uses?
Right. Well, and the reason why I say that, Tracy, is because uses in that district specify whether or not something is ground floor versus upper floor. And so, that's where I'm getting into that element of it. When we talk about ground floor retail and upper floor residential, we're now sort of into a different sort of game when it comes to development. So, I agree with the zoning in that area, but I just want to point it out that that is a reality of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase agreement as presented, subject to the revisions talked about this evening, which would include paragraph 1B, paragraph 2A, 2B, 2C, and a satisfactory answer about conditional use regarding if a referendum can be called on that.
Did you include D on that as well? Because he said...
I did. I have 2A, B, C. Did I miss D? Do we need a D?
That was the easement rights. Did you say that you wanted that in or you didn't want it in? Oh, and F needed to be F.
The readdition of F.
2F?
Let me see if it's 2F. Is it 2F? Okay. Lisa, can you add 2F to that for me? Thank you.
I knew there was one.
Thought I had it all. All right. There is a motion on the table? Thank you. Ingsstrom motioned, and Thomas supported. Those in favor? I'll do a roll call on this one. Ingsstrom, yes. Westover?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Takes us on to our second call to the public. Once again, an opportunity to get up and speak, share your thoughts with us. It is not a question-and-answer session, and we do try to limit you to three minutes. Are there any other speakers this evening? No? All right. Thank you. Board member comments? Anything? Anyone?
No.
No? Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to encourage everyone to come out and vote tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.